The meeting is now called to order. Begin with a roll call. Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Mrs. Chu?
Here.
Mr. Sizmar?
Here.
Mr. Hong?
Here.
Mrs. Lacks?
Here.
Mrs. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Simmons? Mr. Winston? Okay, we have a quorum. We will be rising to salute the flag, but once we have completed with the salute, I'd like to remain standing for a few moments, for a moment of silence. We will be observing that in memory of Lisa Acosta, who passed away on December 26, 2019. Mrs. Acosta was an employee of the district since 2001, serving in several capacities over the years. And during Lisa's last eight years, she worked with special education students at Central School. Her dedication to students was incredible, and she will be missed. Our thoughts and heartfelt sympathies are with her loved ones. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices located at 760 Route 18, East Brunswick, New Jersey. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is the policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the reorganization meeting of the Board, and one of the first items on the agenda is the appointment of temporary chairpersons. So may I have a motion for the appointment of temporary chair?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks, seconded by Mrs. Becker. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So the next item on the agenda is the administration of the oath of office. And it's my pleasure to have each of the board members, newly elected board members, come up to the front of the dais in just a moment. I will call you up. We'll begin with Mr. Sizmar, and we will administer the oath of office. Front, center, please. Mrs. Sizmar, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mark Sizmar-
I, Mark Sizmar-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey-
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith-
And that I will bear true faith-
And allegiance to the same-
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established-
And to the governments established-
In the United States-
In the United States-
And this state-
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I also do solemnly swear-
I also do solemnly swear-
That I possess the qualifications-
That I possess the qualifications-
Prescribed by law-
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member-
For the office of member.
Of a Board of Education-
Of a Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully-
And that I will faithfully-
Impartially-
Impartially.
And justly perform-
And justly perform.
All duties of that office-
All duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gwass? Welcome. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Heather Gwass-
I, Heather Gwass-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution-
That I will support the Constitution-
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith-
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established-
And to the governments established.
In the United States-
In the United States.
And this state-
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I also solemnly swear-
I also solemnly swear-
That I possess the qualifications-
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law-
Prescribed by law.
The office of member-
For the office of member.
Of the Board of Education-
Of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully-
And that I will faithfully-
Impartially-
Impartially.
And justly perform-
And justly perform.
All duties of that office-
All duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Is that Mama?
Yes.
Mr. Hong? Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Li Wu Hong-
I, Li Wu Hong-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution-
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
And the Constitution-
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith-
That I will bear the true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
Allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established-
To the governments established.
In the United States-
In the United States.
And this state-
In this state.
Under the authority-
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
And I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications-
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law-
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member-
Of the member.
Of the Board of Education-
Of the Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully-
Impartially-
Impartially.
And justly perform-
Justly perform.
All duties of that office-
Of duty, all duties of that office.
According to the best-
To the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations to the new board members and to the reelected members.
Thank you.
The three of them are sitting.
One, two, three.
Oh, my God.
You'd think it was planned that way, but it wasn't.
Yeah.
Is there a logic to how we're seated?
We just draw names out of the hat. So moving on with the agenda, the next item is for nominations for Board President. So may I have any nominations from the floor? Mrs. Chu?
Yes, I would like to nominate Vicki Becker. I have known her as an outstanding board member. She's provided her service to this district first as a parent, as a PTA leader, and then on the Board. She's served on every committee, right? Is that right? Every committee that there is in there. And she's been on the Board for a number of years.
Twenty.
Twenty? Okay, so who's counting but twenty? In the past year as President of the Board, she has worked on building consensus among the board members. Education is her love. This district is her love, and the students are her love. So it is my honor to nominate Vicki Becker as President.
So we have Mrs. Chu nominating. Is there a second?
Second.
I will second that.
Second by Mr. Winston. Just made it under the belt.
That's it. It's my time. Get out of here.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, may I have a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hong, second by Mrs. Lacks. We'll now have a roll call vote for Vicki Becker as President of the Board of Education. Mrs. Becker?
Yep.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Mrs. Becker.
I'll take mine. You guys having faith in me is one of the most touching, important things in my life. I can't say I'll never disappoint you, because I'm going to, but I give you my heart and my soul and my mind, what's left of it. And repeat what Susannah said, I love this district. May be kind of corny, but I really do. And I am privileged to work with the people who are sitting up here, central office members in the audience, and incredible staff, support staff, paraprofessionals, administrators. And oh, yeah, there's like 8,000 of those little students, each and every one of whom we up here care about. We agonize over things for one student. We agonize over things that may cost us $5 because we want to make sure that one student gets everything they need and that $5 is being spent the best he can. And I can't tell you how grateful I am, again, for your trust. So thank you. Hey, Jeff?
I got something to read to you later.
You can read during the good of the class.
It's really good. Run the train.
I want to say welcome to Heather officially, and welcome back to Mark and Li Wu. Couldn't imagine anybody else being up there. And I think that we've got a lot of things to do this year, and it's going to be a great year. But I kind of need someone by my side for that.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
Besides Victor-
All right. Me.
Yeah, okay. So I really would like to have a nomination for Board Vice President. Is there anyone who would like to nominate? Barbara?
It is my honor and privilege to nominate Lori Lacks to continue to serve as our school Board Vice President. Can I continue the speech now, or we have to do anything? Okay, thank you. So Lori has served as a dedicated board member for the past 11 years. During that time, she has served as Chair of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, as well as Human Resources and Community Programs. She's also served as a member of the Security Committee Calendar, Negotiations, Student Services, to name a few. She is a devoted leader and puts the needs and best interests of our students first and foremost in all that she does. Lori is balanced in her approach, always listening to all sides of an issue and carefully weighing that information before reaching an informed decision. Lori also offers exceptional support and guidance to both new and current board members. She's an insightful board member who offers creative solutions and approaches that support our district's commitment to excellence academics, the arts, and athletics. And on a personal note, she's a wonderful friend. So it is my distinct privilege to nominate my fellow board member and friend Lori Lacks for this position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Chu. Is there any other nominations from the floor for Board Vice President? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close the nominations for Board Vice President?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Li Wu, second by Barbara. Is there any discussion? This will now be a roll call vote for the Board Vice President.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. It was tempting. I now would like to take a very brief, two- or three-minute recess. I know that people who came out to support the new board members and other loved ones are just really want to stay here all night. But in case anybody has to get home, we'll take a brief recess, okay? Recession, thank you. We're back. All right, everybody, we are on page five of the agenda, and reminding you that for a reason. I'm going to do something kind of corny, but next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the New Jersey School Board Member Code of Ethics. And I actually think these are not just words, that these mean a lot. So I'd like to go around the table and have each board member read part of the code, and we'll just keep going, since there's 10 and we're not. So Jeff, can we start with you, please?
I will uphold and enforce all laws, state order, rules and regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes should be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help those to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them.
I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run.
I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action which may compromise the Board.
I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. But in all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools.
I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer.
Actually, Heather, being the newest board member, I'm going to let you finish up the last two.
Absolutely. I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and will act on such complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
May I please have a motion to adopt this Code of Ethics? Moved by Mr. Winston.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hong. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. The next five items are logistical items for the reorganization of the Board. I would like to have a motion to combine items 10 through 15.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hong. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
And just as a note, in item 14, the blank, we'll have Mrs. Vicki Becker inserted.
Oh, okay. I'll sign anything.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. And now we come to the other person who's on all our side, and we're glad to have him. Superintendent, your turn.
Thank you, President Becker. It's nice to say that.
Thank you.
And Vice President Lacks. And I'd like to wish all the Board a very Happy New Year, and all of you a Happy New Year as well. On Friday, December 20th, every building in the district, including the Administration and Support Operations buildings, were treated to songs of the season by the high school or Churchill Choirs. Everyone enjoyed seeing and hearing the students perform. Thank you to Jeffrey Lesser, interim art supervisor, Adam Goode, vocal music teacher at the high school, and Jamie DeCiena, vocal music teacher at Churchill, for organizing the event. Alumni Day at the high school took place on Friday, December 20th. Over 80 alumni from the class of 2019 returned to the high school to speak to our senior classes about their post-graduation experiences. Alumni Day was a great success, thanks to the efforts of Vanessa Amaturo, Lisa Nelson, and the rest of the counseling team, as well as the teachers who opened their classrooms to our graduates. Congratulations to our December High School Athletes of the Month. Students were selected for this honor by the coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and for modeling exceptional character. Along with the East Brunswick Municipal Alliance for Prevention and Prevention of Drug and Alcohol Abuse, we will hold a parent university for the viewing of the documentary Angst, highlighting the impact of anxiety on children. After the viewing, Dr. Ellen Weg of Stress and Anxiety Services of New Jersey will discuss Responding to Anxiety in School-Aged Children: A Primer for Parents, followed by a question and answer session. This event will be held Thursday, January 30th, at 7:00 p.m. in the media center at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lesky. I would like a recommendation for items 1 through 18. Oh, right, sorry. Boy, I'm jumping ahead. Forgot everything. First of all, our presentation enrollment update will be postponed. We'll get the update next meeting, perhaps? Okay. I forgot very important, the Good of the Cause of the Public. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of providing an opportunity to the public to express themselves on school-related matters. To allow for a fair and orderly public comment period, in accordance with Board bylaw, individual comments are limited to five minutes. Members of the public are reminded this is a public televised meeting, and to protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Is there anyone who wishes to address the Board? Please come up to the podium. Hello, how are you? Could you please state, yes, your name and your address for the record?
So my name is Gigi Sultan, and I live in 20 Pinchon Hill Road in Menalapan, New Jersey. I'm here because all my friends and family live in East Brunswick, and all our children, you know, all family members are here, and their children are in the Board here. So that's why I am present here. I appreciate, congratulations for all the new members, and I appreciate all your hard work. I know you, I'm a teacher myself. I'm a certified teacher, key five, but I work in a private Christian school, so I know the hard work. I know, you know, and I appreciate everything that you do. It just was brought to our attention that last board meeting, I believe it was on the 18th, that the LGBT curriculum and LGBT policy was approved. And we're a big community of Coptic and evangelical people who are deeply strong, you know, on our faith, and we believe in everybody's right and freedom, and we teach our kids the same, that we should accept anyone, no matter, you know, color, race, sex, or whatever they believe their orientation is. They're loved, they're accepted. But then we're reaching the point that we feel like our religious freedom is being violated. We feel like our kids now, we can't say that sex is between a man and a woman. They get, you know, attacked verbally, they get shut down. And now to know that this is going to be an everyday lesson plan that is going to be implemented, that they're going to have to suffer going to the bathroom in the locker room because of fear there is a male in the girls' bathroom or who identifies as a female. So it's a very confusing and concerning situation that we feel like we're going to be suffering, feels a violation of our privacy, a violation of our parental authority when we're teaching our kids otherwise at home, and then they come here and they were taught something different. So we believe that the sex and all, you know, this topic should be something private for the parents to decide and what, when, and what to teach their kids, and we don't want to rob them of their innocence. And at the same time, and just the school has so much to offer, more than we have in a lesson plan every single day talking about sex. I believe it's going to be implemented not just to the health class, but based on what I've seen in California, where it was implanted for one year so far, family members and friends, they're suffering. The examples that I heard about is terrifying, and we see it as a religious abuse, we see it as like, you know, parental abuse. We see it, you know, as a just limitation to our freedom. We respect their freedom, but their freedom should not be a hinder to our freedom based on the Ninth Amendment in our constitution. We respect them, and we want them to have the full freedom that they have. But just I don't come to school, teach the Bible, and reinforce the facts between male and female, that should not be teaching of otherwise at all, and that should be just left to parents, whatever they believe in at home, and really come here and focus on what really matters here, because we feel violated. And we feel violated from our authority as a parent and violated, you know, for our religious freedom. Me personally, I'm coming from Egypt 22 years ago, suffering from Christian persecution in so many ways, you know, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, and I came here, you know, land of the free. And I enjoyed it for so many years, and I feel I've been losing it for the past few years. I'm losing my freedom of religion, I'm losing my freedom of speech, and I feel like I've been limited, and I feel like, what's the point? What I ran from for a better life for my children, I'm facing it now. My kids are facing it now. And I believe the school has so much, you know, to focus on history, reading, writing, you know, not the history that, you know, will promote sexual orientation, not the policies that will all focus on sexual orientation. This should be a topic left behind.
One minute, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. So that's, even my, the kids in school sending me pictures of a painting, you know, promoting we are who we are with a picture on the hallway in East Brunswick High School promoting, you know, you are who you are, promoting, you know, you can be whatever you want to do. These kids have some kind of sexual disorder, we don't need to affirm it, we need to actually get them the right help and show them to the right direction. And I know that the new curriculum has like talked about, you know, we should stop, you know, drug abuse, but then we promote them to have puberty blockers and opposite sex, you know, hormones, which is 40% of these kids end up committing suicide and cause a lot of confusion to young kids. As I feel in California, it's going to be from pre-K, yeah, it's already implemented pre-K to high school. So we really want, like maybe a date to consider listening to the parents and their concerns and answer all their questions.
Time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the Board? Yes, sir, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Thank you so much.
My name is Imad Botros. I live in Sixth Martin Court in East Brunswick here.
Could you please repeat your name, please?
My name is Imad, I M A D, last name Botros, B O T R O S.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.[1743.25] Myself, as a former teacher, I have an education degree, and I understand your hard work, and I really appreciate every one of you and the hard work you're doing for my kids. I have two kids, one of them is a graduate from high school and is graduating 2020 from college. And my daughter, she's in high school this year. So I understand how hard you work and how much effort you put in our kids, and we appreciate it. The reason actually I personally moved to East Brunswick here because East Brunswick is a conservative community, and we believe in the school system and we believe in every one of you. That's why we pay a lot of money for our houses, and we pay high taxes for the purpose of our educations. And when we heard last board meeting that the gender equality policy that it approved without any of the parents was actually attending that meeting, it's violating ours right as a parent. And when I heard, you know, my daughter is going to the bathroom and have a boy in the bathroom with her, that's make me also not feeling comfortable even sending my daughter to the high school. I just want you to know also, the community here is from multinational community, is from different country, different religion, different background. And I don't know if you heard it from other people, other than me personally, or from other people, but the community here is concerned about the actual curriculum that is going to be in place. Whatever that curriculum is going to teach, I think we heard multiple, you know, evidence of what's going to be actually has been teach in next year or whatever. So we oppose that. It's because opposing my religious freedom, I'm a Christian man, I believe in the Christianity, I believe in what's in the Bible, and to enforce some other opinion to my kids other than what I'm teaching them at home, it's violate my right as a parent. So we looking up to you, meaning everyone here in the Board of Educations, to help us to teach our kids our belief. We have their all respect for anyone else in the school. We're not violating anyone's right, but we need to keep our kids safe from any harm from their fellow student or even the teacher to teach them something other than what we teach them at home or what we teach them at church. Second thing, or whatever the number that I'm talking about, is the community here is unhappy. And I'm just letting you know, some people thinking about even moving out of East Brunswick. If it's not this year, maybe next year, or years come, you will see people flying out of East Brunswick here because a lot of people came and pay a lot of money for their houses for the purpose of their educations. I came, you know, here, my kids is my priority. When I see my kids under harm, I will do whatever it take to protect them. And the first thing, I'm coming to you tonight, I'll let you know that we're not happy about the gender equality policy that approved without even the parents was attending the meeting. And we're not happy about the curriculum that is going to be enforced on our kids, against our religious belief and our, you know, Bible teaching as a Christian. And we're looking up to you to help us, how we can actually address this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, I close the public portion, Dr. Valeski.
The only clarification I heard from both constituents tonight who spoke of the policies the board adopted at last meeting, and I just wanted to clarify, the board did adopt a transgender policy. It wasn't a gender equality policy. But that's to help us administer the rules of the state, the laws of the state, and to guide the administrators when a student identifies as transgender. We would not have a situation where males and females would be sharing the same restroom. So there are accommodations made for that. So I just want to make that clear. But I didn't want that in the public. I believe that's what I heard, a concern. The curriculum that was signed by Governor Murphy at the beginning of last calendar year is simply guidance for school districts to have an all-inclusive curriculum and to make sure that all groups are included. There is no defined curriculum from the state that we are aware of yet. There's no model for us. And we're simply, we're working on making sure that we can comply with the law. But we've always been a very inclusive community. And I don't see major shifts in what we do, but we do have to make sure that we do align our curriculum with what the law requires. And we're still working on that. So that hasn't been defined yet. And the board hasn't approved any curricular issues or any curriculum regarding the new law to involve LGBT and disabled individuals for the 2020-21 school year yet. So right now, we're still working on that.
Dr. Valeski, just to clarify, there is a law, a legal mandate from the state?
There is.
Okay. And as we just said, as we read our ethics, and as you heard in the board members taking oath tonight, we swear to uphold the law of New Jersey. Where you're talking about flexibility, I'm not familiar with, you know, the aspect you're talking about, but I'm sure that you'll bring us all the information we need. But when there's a state mandate or a state law, we sworn to uphold the law. So I'm, the public portion has been closed. I don't want you to take that as that we don't want to continue to have this discussion with you. Trudy, please make sure she has your contact information. And Dr. Valeski, you can make appointment to come and speak with him to answer all your questions. She'll give you her email address. If you have questions for the board, the email will be forwarded to us, and we can absolutely address it. But again, we're governed by laws, and the law says that once a public portion is closed, that that is the opportunity for the public to speak. So I'm not, I saw your hands raised. I don't want you to think I'm being rude and ignoring you. That's the laws that govern.
Sir, sir, I'm sorry, the board cannot engage in a discussion. The open portion was for the public to comment, and the board has taken those comments, but it's not an opportunity to engage in a back and forth. You'll have an opportunity, please, to contact Mrs. Atkins and then schedule an appointment.
And absolutely, Dr. Valeski, and eventually the board. If you send us an email, you can get in touch with any of us. Trudy will make sure that we get it, and we listen to everything that people say up here, everything.
If I could recommend, if you do have concerns and you have multiple people with the same concerns, I'd prefer to have a meeting with a group of people rather than to have meetings with individuals, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. Okay. Now, Board of Education items, one through eighteen, which are minutes. Let's try to think of the best way to do this, and if this is okay with you, if parliamentary procedure, when I ask all those in favor, people raise their hand, can they say then if they're taking an abstention, or do they need to wait until I call for abstention?
I think on the, when you call for the abstentions, I'd like to hear the item number.
Okay.
And then I can record that.
So everyone can approve it, and then any meeting that you were in present and you feel you should abstain from approving those minutes, when I ask for abstention, you can raise your hand and give those dates, okay?
For the item number.
For the item number, yes, that's important. So can I please have a motion for items one through eighteen on the Board of Education agenda? Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sizmar. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Anyone who wishes to abstain, please raise your hand, Heather.
I'm abstaining on items one through eighteen.
Noted.
I abstain on item six, the Aprilite.
Noted.
Orper?
I abstain on twelve, thirteen, seventeen, eighteen.
I abstain on number three.
I lost one of them. I'm sorry. I abstain, I had pulled out, I abstain on number one. And I can't find June third. Okay. Oh, wait, here it is, it's number sixteen, sorry. Okay. Thank you.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. I'd like a motion for curriculum instruction items one through five. Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hong. Is there any discussion? I'd actually wanted to ask Dr. Valeski, and the first item is approving Flex program enrollment. And I was wondering if you could just speak for a minute to just remind public what our Flex program is?
Okay. Our Flex program is now in its fourth year. It is our, considered our alternative track program. So students who have issues in school, discipline issues, or who have issues that prevent them from coexisting in the high school population as normal students would during a normal student day, we have an alternative track in the evening, and they attend school in the evening, and they complete their graduation requirements during that time. The program we set up for students to have the option to attend Flex to demonstrate proficiency, to get caught up, or to demonstrate they can re-enter the high school population and to reintroduce them to the population. However, in some cases, that may not be possible, so they remain in the Flex program as an alternative setting. And that's for their protection and for the protection of other students, so we take that very seriously. But we are looking to expand the program. We have some students that we have identified that will need services in the future. So we knew three and four years ago that this program was going to begin to expand just based on our student population. So it's something we continually look at. But we have had success. In our first year in the Flex program, we had a young man, and he would be okay with me talking about his situation. I won't talk about him personally. But without the Flex program, he wouldn't have graduated. And there were a lot of family dynamics that would have prevented him from graduating. And he was in the Flex program, and he was a successful graduate that school year. So that's the kind of success we have seen in the investment in the program. So it's been, it's been a great investment by this Board of Education.
And the efforts that you and your staff have put through and the staff of the Flex program have just been terrific. Going back to what I said earlier, one child graduated who wouldn't have. That's, that's everything. So this is a roll call vote. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gloss.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Can I please have a motion for items one and two on our facility agenda? Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sizmar. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. On the financial services agenda, can I please have a motion for items one through five? Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Chu. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gloss.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to our human resources agenda, I want to call your attention to the addendum that was on the table tonight. And can I please have a motion for items one and two on our human resources agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sizmar. Is there any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gloss.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
And President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. On our student services agenda, can I please have a motion for items number one and two?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hong, second by Mrs. Lacks. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gloss.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Transportation services agenda, can I please have a motion for items one and two?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hong. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. And that brings us to our report from our student rep. I hope you had a good winter break, and I'm sure you're thrilled to be back in school.
I'm so excited to be back. I also lost my voice a little bit over break, so I'm sorry I sound like this. But it was great. Before break, I missed that meeting, so I just wanted to say we had some really great things going on, like before winter break, as Dr. Valeski discussed already. The choir went caroling, and Ivan Choir, so it's my favorite thing we do all year. It's so much fun. And we had Alumni Day. So it was really helpful to hear from alumni, especially people who we might not necessarily know, but who are in the schools that we're trying to get into. That was really helpful. We also hit our January first deadline, so all the counselors and teachers were really helpful, getting rec letters in and sending transcripts to help us get there. And now we're preparing for midterms, the seniors' last midterms ever before graduating. So exciting. And to help students prepare for midterms across the school, National Honor Society has tutoring sessions the days leading up so that everybody has opportunity to study more and get some help and do really well. We're also doing scheduling for next year, and we have the elective fair next week, so everyone can kind of learn more about the different electives available at the school and maybe decide to try something new next year, expand their horizons. We are also continuing our safety and climate team meetings just to ensure that all the students feel safe and comfortable in the school environment. Besides that, we're also getting ready for all the vocal concerts across the district, so just promoting the arts, because that's really important. It's a big part of what we do at the high school and in East Brunswick in general. And besides that, we're just hosting some fun events, like Mr. EBHS on January 10th, so if you want to come out and support us. And it's just like fun, gets the students excited, especially as midterms are coming up and we get a little tired. So, yeah, that's it.
And of course, in 2020, there's no such thing as senioritis, right?
No, never. It's not kicked in at all, can't feel it at all.
Thank you so much. Before I ask for any committee reports or information items, I want to just talk to the board for a minute about committees. So we're going to just do something a little different this year. Bernie is going to email all of you our current list of committees, and all I want you to simply do is indicate on it what, if anything, you would like changed. Okay, and then just email it back to me. So just indicate on it some way, shape, or form, write a little note or just use that cross-out function on Word or whatever, and let me know what, if anything, you would like changed. And I'm going to ask for this by Saturday. I would like by Monday morning to have, be able to give Dr. Valeski a list of our committees. I firmly believe that the board should never get in the way of the business of the district, and they've got a lot of committee meetings to start scheduling. So again, if you're not going to be able to give me your feedback by Saturday, please let me know that. Otherwise, I'll expect to hear from all of you by Saturday, so. Speaking of that, anybody got any committee reports, information items for the good of the cause from the board?
I have a good of the cause.
Mr. Winston.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for recognizing me tonight. I wanted to speak to you, to President Becker.
Uh-uh.
And this is what I would have said had the trains run on time today, and I was able to at least get a little at least get a little bit in. Now, the role of the Board of Education president, as I see it, is one of a leadership organizer, facilitator, and mostly it has to possess civility and passion. And while a couple of these characteristics may exist in most people even sitting around this dais here, it's rare to find an individual that embodies all of those things. Don't cry, we had an agreement. All right, all those things. I believe we are fortunate enough to have one of those such individuals. And I'm happy that Ms. Chu was able to nominate and the board approved you in this well-deserving position. I do wanna go on to say that the privilege has been mine to watch Ms. Becker grow in the role as a current Board of Ed president over this last year. Her style, perhaps different from the past, is to encourage debate, discussion, and collaboration to arrive at a consensus of a best approach. Through countless phone calls, text messages, and at times socializing, the district lives in ways, always in her heart and in her mind, in whatever she's done and what I've bumped into her, even in a supermarket. The kids are on her mind. Her style of approaching major issues are measured and concise. My grandmother, Tilly Winston, who was born in 1899, said to me when I was six years old and I was angry about the arcade up the street increasing games from a nickel to a quarter, and she told me this. She said, Jeff, when you're faced with a decision, you could do something or you could do nothing, but if you choose to do nothing, you give up your right to complain about it. Ms. Becker always does something in these meetings and in the way she approaches this district. Her leadership has brought both positive change and even more importantly, a plan to further and fortify our district. Lastly, this board is comprised of many, many strong, very strong personalities and varied life experiences. And Ms. Becker is a wizard, has wizard-like qualities, subtly helps these differences blend to create a driving force of fresh ideas and the ability to execute. Her open-mindedness cultivates a culture where the goal among all remains the same, what's best for the kids and what's best for this district. I hope Ms. Becker has an equally successful year as the one I just witnessed and I am honored to serve on the board with her. Thank you.
That was worth the wait, yeah. I'm speechless. If I am half one-eighth of everything you talked about, it's because of all of you. So together, we're nine extraordinary pencils. Thank you so much for that generosity.
All right.
I'm floored.
I thought that he was gonna talk about the fundraiser for the Lady Bears.
Applebee's.
Applebee's fundraiser.
I know.
So I just figured I would mention, everyone sees the fundraisers for all the different athletic teams, everyone goes to the car washes. Applebee's is something that you can buy at the door, so some of us have daughters that play basketball and would love to serve you breakfast. That's my favorite thing, just because my kid has to serve and clean up after me. All my years of doing this for her, so.
It's true.
If you find yourself hungry, it's Sunday morning, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. And for anyone up here, if you wanna see our daughters serve you breakfast, 8 to 10 AM at Applebee's. Well, I said it wasn't as exciting as what you had to say.
It's good. No, food is always important. I think that's good.
Anybody else? Any good of the cause for the board? Seeing none. Sorry, I'm just still.
One minute.
We have a need for a closed session. So can I please have a motion? Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed in tonight's agenda. Whereas the length of the closed session is estimated to be 30 minutes, after which a public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Can I please have a motion for going into closed session?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Lacks, second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. We're in closed session. I neglected to say Happy New Year at the beginning of the meeting. Let me close it by saying wishing all of you the best and your families the best in this new year. Thank you for coming.